Hello.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you. We're going to give it about another minute. There's still some folks in the waiting room being admitted.
Testing?
Yep, there's an echo though, John. All right, well, it looks like there are currently no other individuals in the waiting room. And if anybody does dial in, I will go ahead and admit them to the meeting. But first, I want to say good evening to everybody. We've got a big night ahead of us. That said, the time is 7:30 on this Tuesday, May 11th. And as such, I'm going to call the city council meeting to order. At this time, I ask that you remain muted and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Bear with me here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With the pledge completed, I would like to have members of the council go ahead and unmute yourselves. And at that point, in preparation for the clerk to call roll, so Judy, when you're ready, if you could call roll.
Mikail.
Present.
Budmats.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Veneziano.
Here.
Passassi.
Here.
Diastas.
Present.
Soneka.
Here.
With seven present and nobody absent, there is a quorum this evening. Therefore, with that, members of the audience and participants on this virtual meeting are reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel as well as other media outlets. As always, a couple of quick housekeeping items to get into before we begin with the agenda. First, the public comment will be afforded to the public who are joining us on this conference line, as long as you've provided your contact credentials and the subject matter for which you'd like to speak about before the deadline, as noted on tonight's agenda. Members of the public who are present in city council chambers, listening to the meeting, will also be afforded that opportunity to provide their public comment. But that's in accordance with the procedures that are applicable to public comments at an in-person meeting of the city council. Namely, those members of the public must have signed in before the start of tonight's meeting. And as always, any written comment that were submitted prior to the meeting will be read aloud if requested as such. So as we get into it, the first order of business is to approve minutes from the previous meeting. There are two sets of minutes to approve tonight. The first set of minutes is from April 20th, committee of the whole meeting. With that, I'd look for a motion to approve these minutes by show of hand. Thank you, Alderman Soneka. Thank you, Alderman Budmats, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to these minutes by show of hand? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Passassi.
Yes.
Diastas.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those minutes are approved. This brings us to the second set of minutes, which are for the April 27th, 2021 city council meeting. Is there by show of hand a motion to approve these minutes? Thank you, Alderman Passassi. Thank you, Alderman Mikail, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes by show of hand? Okay, seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call roll?
Diastas.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed here, these minutes are approved as well. As we move on here for the mayor's report, I just have two quick updates. The first is to provide a quick reminder that our second round of the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccines will be taking place at the community church of Rolling Meadows again on this Tuesday, May 18th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. For all of those residents who attended to receive their initial dose back on April 27th. And the second point I want to make tonight is that during the last city council meeting, I shared some metrics from the Cook County Department of Public Health on how many residents in Rolling Meadows had received complete vaccines. I did some further digging on this and I realized that Cook County Department of Public Health is providing their percentages based on the total population of a community. But the total population of a community is not exactly eligible to be vaccinated, given current age restrictions. So as a result, I used other data to determine the total population in Rolling Meadows of those who are eligible to receive vaccine. And with the updated numbers as reported from last Wednesday, I just want to share that we're now sitting at 42% of the population with a complete vaccine. So slowly, we're incrementally growing to a point where we're supposed to be based on the CDC's guidelines for this theoretical herd immunity and when we can safely return to all things community and all things we wish to get back to. With that, are there any ward reports this evening? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a topic I received, actually two inquiries today. And I know it's not related to the city, but I was asked to bring it up about the United States Postal Service delays and problems in mail. I had a couple residents reach out. I did provide to them, just based on trying to help residents in the past regarding this issue, is it is all through the United States Postal Service. So I did want to provide to those residents who have joined us online or in chambers. There is a phone number for the Arlington Heights Post Office is where I was able to track down where these inquiries can be sent. And that phone number for the Arlington Heights Post Office is 847-253-7806. Regarding delayed mail delivery, sometimes no mail delivery. We're experiencing the same thing. We're at our residence, so just wanted to bring that up and provide the post office number for Arlington Heights, where I was directed by the Postmaster General that these should be sent. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Veneziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I actually had a resident call me today about the suggestion of having some communication with our recycling company. Issue some kind of sticker that would be applied to our recycling bins. We kind of, most of us know that they're the recycling bins. But if you really look at the bins, they're not actually labeled recycling. And so her suggestion was that if they would be willing to some kind of send out some kind of stickers and we send them out in the mailing with the water bills, maybe we could do something along those lines so that there's no confusion that they are recycle bins only. So just wanted to pass on that suggestion from a resident. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Alderman Veneziano. Any other ward reports this evening? Okay, and if not, this would be the time where we'd open the floor to the public for 20 minutes. And I just want to share information for the council. We do have one individual signed in. It's Derek Oberg. He's available for item B on tonight's agenda. He didn't necessarily want to speak this evening, but wanted to alert the council that he's available on the meeting for any questions. So when we arrive at item B, if there are questions, we can always make a motion to open the floor and address them as necessary. But with that, there aren't any official public comments and signed in individuals. So as we move on to there, from there to the items pending, we'll begin with line item A, ordinance number 21-24, to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there by show of hand a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Thank you, Alderman Mikail, for the second. Is there by show of hand any discussion? Well, seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Soneka.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Diastas.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item B, ordinance number 21-25, and to grant approval of a special use pursuant to section V-4-A-3 of City Code, Chapter 122. Alderman, yes, I'm just going to put you on mute if you don't mind here. Chapter 122 of the City of Rolling Meadows zoning ordinance to operate an indoor athletic facility in an M1 zoning district, a variation to reduce required parking spaces from 76 to the 62 provided on the lot, and other relief necessary to accommodate the indoor bicycle studio at 1225 Carnegie Street, Suite 108. Is there by show of hand a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, and thank you, Alderman Budmats, for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Well, seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Diastas.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item C, ordinance number 21-26, to grant approval of a variation from section 3-7-B-4 of the City Code, Chapter 122, the City of Rolling Meadows zoning ordinance to reduce the south side yard setback from 10 feet to 5 feet to allow a two-car garage in an R3 zoning district, and other relief necessary to accommodate a two-car garage at 3801 Raven Lane. Is there by show of hand a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Thank you, Alderman Mikail, for the second. Is there by show of hand any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Diastas.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us down to line item D. It's ordinance number 21-27, to authorize the disposal of surplus city property equipment. Is there by show of hand a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Diastas. Thank you, Alderman Budmats, for the second. Is there by show of hand any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Diastas.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yeah.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Now, we don't have any consent resolutions this evening here. So this brings us now to old business, which is a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for May 11th, 2021. Is there by show of hand a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman Diastas, and thank you, Alderman Budmats, for the second. Is there any discussion on this item by show of hand? Alderman Veneziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to clarify with staff. I noticed that there is a membership charge on there for Northwest Municipal Conference for $12,290. If you could just clarify exactly what that membership is for.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. That's actually for the full amount for Northwest Municipal Conference does lobbying for us and also brings up additional items that are going down to Springfield, plus the federal government. So that's the COG, the government group that most municipalities in the Northwest and the North actually participate in. So again, over 70 different municipalities, part of this COG that actually does lobbying. Plus, they do legislation, plus they do additional work for all the municipalities out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Any other discussion on this item? Excuse me, I have a frog in my throat. Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Diastas.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. Well, now that we've concluded our old business, we're going to have some time here, as you can see on the agenda, to go ahead and make some transitions. And in order to do that, we need to deviate from tonight's scheduled agenda. And so with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to deviate, so we can go ahead and continue with the transition. Thank you, Alderman Budmats, for the first, and Alderman Diastas, for the second. Is there any discussion on deviating from tonight's agenda? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Passassi.
Yes.
Diastas.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, we will now deviate. And at this time, obviously, we've had some very unorthodox series of events throughout the course of this past year. So I wouldn't expect tonight to be any different. I'm trying to give Manager Crumstock a little bit of time to make his way to the city council chambers, where I will then turn the time and mic over to him, so he can share with Alderman Diastas what is customary and prior practice with any council member who is leaving the elected office. Manager Crumstock, if you are in the council chambers and ready to take the mic, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Before you, obviously, we'd like to show you the diastas way. This is the plaque that we usually do sign, I think. We do appreciate Alderman Diastas' 20-plus years of service throughout the city, obviously through the 90s, the 20s, and 2020s out there. But again, we do appreciate all that he has done. We know that he will be still a great resident in Rolling Meadows, and we appreciate all that he has done. They're taking pictures. I hope that you see again. This is what it is. And again, we do appreciate all that you have done. Thank you, thank you.
I would just like to say, it's been my honor to work for the residents of Rolling Meadows. I hope and I thank all the residents who have voted for me over these past 24 years. And I look forward to continuing on in some sort. Rolling Meadows is my home, and I thank everybody, city staff, my family, my wife. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Diastas, for sharing that. At this time, we would typically have the swearing-in or the oath of office for each of the individuals who are taking their new seats. Because we do have the pandemic going on, what we were able to do is previously record the swearing-in in an environment where the individual could participate and bring their closest family members or friends to share in that occasion. And so if you bear with me, I'm going to go ahead and bring this up. And if we can all mute our microphones, so that way we don't distract from the audio on here, so... I'm going to go ahead and mute that microphone at this time. And any other mics that do pop up, I will mute, so we don't spoil this opportunity for these folks. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Karen Mikail.
I, Karen Mikail.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman Ward 1.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman Ward 1.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook, State of Illinois.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook, and State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of office.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of office.
Of Alderman Ward 1 to the best of my ability.
To Alderman, as Alderman of Ward 1, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Nick Budmats.
I, Nick Budmats.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman Ward 2.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman Ward 2.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook, in State of Illinois.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook, State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of office.
Of Alderman Ward 2 to the best of my ability.
Of Alderman Ward 2 to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Thank you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jennifer Veneziano.
I, Jennifer Veneziano.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman Ward 4.
I, being elected to Alderman of Ward 4.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook, in State of Illinois.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook, in the State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of office.
Of Alderman Ward 4 to the best of my ability.
Of Alderman of Fourth Ward to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mandy Reyes.
I, Mandy Reyes.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman Ward 6.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman Ward 6.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook, in State of Illinois.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook, in the State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of office.
Of Alderman Ward 6 to the best of my ability.
Of Alderman Ward 6 to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You are now Alderman Ward 6.
Thank you.
Well, naturally, we're not going to win any Emmys for that production. But as a council, I do know we're going to deliver a lot of growth and progress to this city over the next couple of years. While piecing together that video, I started to reflect. And as I did, I thought a couple of things. The first was finding myself satisfied with the changes I've seen occur over the past four years in this council. I got involved because I wanted to see change. I wanted to see change in accountability, ownership, and our city's approach to innovation, and basically, an overall change in culture, where the council and the staff are equally emphatic about proactive decision-making, where those proactive decisions are driven by data. And finally, that the eventuality of my time here leads to the council that has evolved in becoming more reflective of the residents who make up this diverse community. Now, I know the last desire is going to have a lot longer lead time coming to fruition, but I'm confident that that's going to happen. And for now, I'm just honored to serve on a council that, for the first time in this city's history, is composed of four women serving simultaneously, holding a majority vote. And as a group, I believe that we're all critical, independent thinkers, and we're like-minded in the sense that we wish to see the needs of the people get put before the wants of the person, and that each one of us will ensure that their residents have a voice. And so by saying all this, basically boils down to how much I'm looking forward to working with these seven council members and the objectives that we're going to accomplish. And so I think it's fitting, and only if they wish, but for the recently elected officials to have an opportunity to share their thoughts or introduce themselves. And if you do, feel free to go ahead and raise your hand, and I will just call on you by order of ward. Alderman Mikail.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to the residents for choosing me to be your representative and allowing me to continue to be the voice of Ward 1. I am really excited to be in this position and am very much looking forward to working and collaborating with the fellow members, with my fellow members of council and city staff. And I'm looking forward to moving Rolling Meadows towards the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. Alderman Veneziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm kind of pigging back off Alderman Mikail, or I should say Alderwoman Mikail. I think we can start saying that. So thank you to all the residents that came out and voted in all of the wards. I know it was tough with the pandemic. We had low turnouts, but thank you all who came out and voted. And thank you to Ward 4 residents for all of your continued support. Looking forward to the next four years and seeing what we can accomplish and just seeing how far we can really move the city of Rolling Meadows forward. And I'm really excited. So thank you again.
Thank you, Alderwoman Veneziano. If there's any more, I'll wait a quick second. If not, it'll be time to close the floor and take roll call for this new council. All right, so it looks like I will look for a motion to close the floor by show of hand here. Thank you, Alderman Mikail, for the first, and Alderman Veneziano, for the second. I'm going to have to get used, very used to saying Alderwoman. I think we might have to change some codes to go with that. Is there any discussion on closing the floor? If not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes. With seven in favor and then opposed, we will now close the floor and continue on with calling the meeting back to order. Now, at this time... Excuse me for a second. Let me get back on my pages here. I've got so many tabs open. Okay, now Judy, should we go ahead and call roll for all the new members available?
Yes.
All right. Would you go ahead and call that, please?
Sure. Mikail.
Here.
Budmats. Budmats.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Veneziano.
Still here.
Passessi.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Sanoka.
Here.
With seven present and nobody absent, we're going to resume with our regularly scheduled meeting here. So that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Let me go ahead and share the same page on the shared monitor, which is the ordinance is in for first reading. This consists of one item. It's item F. So in this case, is there a motion to consider the ordinance in for first reading by show of hand? Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Thank you, Alderman Sanoka, for the second. Line item F, ordinance number 21-00, is to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanoka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance will be moved forward for second reading. Well, next on the agenda item is the consent resolutions, and this consists of five items. Those items are G through K. Does any Alderman wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for resolutions? Please raise your hand now, if so. Okay, seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the five resolutions in a single motion without debate. Is there, by show of hand, such a motion? Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Thank you for the second, Alderman Sanoka. Line item G, resolution number 21-R-41, is to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Illinois Environmental Protection Agency for funds awarded for the Park Street Drainage Improvement Project through the Green Infrastructure Green Initiatives Grant Program. Line item H, resolution number 21-R-42, is to award a contract for professional engineering design services for proposed Park Street Storm Sewer Improvement Area. Line item I, resolution number 21-R-43, is to award a contract for 2021 Street Reconstruction Project Engineering Services. Line item J, resolution number 21-R-44, is to award a contract for the 2021 Annual Street Reconstruction Project. Lastly, line item K, resolution number 21-R-45, is to reject bids received for the valve and hydrant replacement program. The question is, shall the five resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoka.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. Well, that brings the council to other business and reports. And just a reminder, for this, I don't have any appointments tonight, but I do have two proclamations. The first proclamation is for the National Public Works Week, and the second is for Building Safety Month. So beginning with the National Public Works Week, the proclamation with a motto of stronger together for the week of May 16 through May 22, in honor of all public works professionals who, along with their communities, are committed to being stronger together while focusing on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people in the city of Rolling Meadows. Therefore, let it be resolved that I, Joe Gallo, Mayor of the City of Rolling Meadows, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16 through May 22, 2021, as a National Public Works Week, and I urge all citizens of the city of Rolling Meadows to join me, along with representatives of the American Public Works Association, the Canadian Public Works Association, and other government units by acknowledging and participating in activities, events, and/or ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make toward protecting and improving our national health, safety, and quality of life. The next proclamation for the National Building Safety Month, May 2021, where the motto is Prevent, Prepare, Protect: Building Codes Save. In honor of the Building Safety and Fire Prevention Officials, Architects, Engineers, Builders, Tradespeople, Design Professionals, Laborers, Plumbers, and other professionals in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings in accordance with the building codes that save, prevent, prepare, and protect. Whereas, in observation of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, to acknowledge the essential services provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Therefore, let it be resolved that I, Joe Gallo, Mayor of the City of Rolling Meadows, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage all our citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. Thank you for that. And I thank all those who are involved with those two areas. Are there any reports from the clerk this evening?
No, not tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Judy. Then that'll bring us to city staff reports. Just a reminder, there are no discussions during these staff reports, but we will begin with the first item, community items of interest. So Manager Crumstock, when you're ready, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, I do have one additional to add on, and just one footnote that's to one of the items too. But we do want to thank everybody who participated in the Saturday, April 24 prescription drug takeback event here that was conducted at City Hall in the parking lot. At the conclusion of the event, the Rolling Meadows Police Department collected 106 pounds of expired unwanted, unused, and potentially dangerous and controlled substances. That was actually much larger than what we've seen in the last few years, but it's greatly appreciated getting that off everybody's homes or locations or anything else like that. We do want to remind, and we do put this in the news and views, for all residents and friends, anybody if you're looking for a disposal drop box for those kind of prescriptions, we do have one here, thanks to Cook County, on the second floor of City Hall, that you can always drop off and dispose of prescription drugs. We do not take liquids in this one. Usually, the DEA puts out a second drug takeback, and when we have that, we will announce that too. We also want to remind people that it is May, so the reminder, the sprinkling restrictions are set to begin by code on May 15. To conserve water throughout the community, lawn sprinkling is prohibited between noon and 6:00 PM daily and on consecutive days. We do want to thank everybody who donated at the Thursday, April 29 blood drive. The next blood drive scheduled here in City Hall with Vitalent is scheduled for Thursday, June 24, again, from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. We do want to make sure that people know about social distancing. Appointments are really needed. Vitalent, 877-258-4825 number, and we'll reiterate that in June as we get closer. Obviously, to make commitments and also make sure that blood drives continue, future drives with the city of Rolling Meadows and Vitalent are scheduled for 2021 to happen and be conducted, not on just that June one, but also August 26, October 28, and December 23. We do want to mention that this Saturday, the Rolling Meadows Garden Club will be conducting its annual plant and craft sale. This is after a one-year hiatus due to COVID-19 concerns. And again, it is happening this Saturday, May 15, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, rain or shine. They are utilizing a new location, that's 3,000 Central Road, not the usual 3,200, the old Public Works Building. So please go to Park Central, and again, that is this Saturday, May 15, between 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM, 3,000 Central Road, for the Rolling Meadows Garden Club items. We do want to mention, starting on May 29, the first city market for the season will happen. This is between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM at the Community Church at 2720 Kirchhoff Road. A reminder, as discussed in 2020, new for this year would be noon to 1:00 PM, would be the council meet and greet. We hope that members will be there, and obviously, that's the new time that we're doing, noon to 1:00 PM at any of the city markets. And we do one a month for that. Also, on May 29, we will do the Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony, starting at 11:00 AM on Kirchhoff Road. The ceremony usually starts at 11:30. We do have plans to read about two and a half years' worth of names, because obviously, we started in 2019, and then we had a storm that came in real briefly, and then we stopped. And then for other people who were there, we finished it up, but we need to do 2019, 2020, and that's actually the 2018 names too. We do want to mention, scheduled for June 11, the annual block party will happen on Central Road between Barker Avenue and Jay Lane. This will happen between 4:30 and 8:30 PM. There will be road closure, specifically. Obviously, for the section that we will be using for the block party, we'll be closing that off soft on 3:00, but 3:30 will be closed off completely. So again, please join us on June 11, annual block party. At the next meeting, at the end of May, we will talk about the bands. American English is the big band that is actually scheduled to play, and we are using as much property on Central Road, plus the high school, green space, and some other locations to make sure that we're socially distanced and also making sure that we're safe. Obviously, it is coming up, but IRS and the State of Illinois did do an extension until May 17 for the federal and state taxes. Please make sure that you're in compliant with all the pieces in there. We do want to mention, just a friendly reminder, that the State of Illinois, we have what's called Scott's Law, and it's also known as Move Over Law. This regulation mandates that when approaching any police or emergency vehicle stopped along the roadway, you must proceed with due caution, change lanes if possible, and reduce your speed. Please do your part to keep our first responders safe. Scott's Law is named after Chicago Fire Lieutenant Scott Gillian, who was struck and killed on December 23, 2000, while assisting at an accident scene. We do want to mention really briefly to a few of the new Aldermen, please make sure that you sign your alts and return them to Deputy City Clerk Judy Bros. You can do that as quickly as you can, greatly appreciate it. And then obviously, we do want to mention that please shop, dine, and order in Rolling Meadows. It is more important than ever, even that we're starting to see some of the restrictions, and hopefully in June and July, and then we'll be back to restore Phase Five. But it really is important to remember all our big boxes, or restaurants, or small businesses, and really do shop and dine in Rolling Meadows. With that, those are items of interest for this first meeting of May.
Thank you for sharing those community items of interest. Manager Crumstock, we'll now move on to the second item here, which is the Traffic Review Committee Report for April. And for this, I will defer to Director Horn when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome new Alder people. Just a few items that I think are of interest to the Aldermen, several Aldermen on the council. We had an item that was brought to us several months ago by one of the Aldermen regarding cut-through traffic on Vermont. The police chief and their department have purchased new equipment that will allow them to monitor those areas, so they have started that process. So that's just a update to that Alder person. And secondly, there were two issues related to signage that we've since addressed. One was on grouse trail and, or grouse and Wilkie Road, where there's some confusion regarding dead-end signage or no outlet signage. We feel like we've made changes that will alleviate those concerns. Additionally, we've added solar-powered flashing light stop signs at the intersection of Weber and Central, because of the wide intersection legs in, at that intersection. There was some motorists that would actually not stop at the intersection, so we feel like that is a solution that will have some long-lasting effects as well. So while it seems like Traffic Review Committee doesn't meet that often lately, we did accomplish some things over the last month, so that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Horn. Thank you for sharing that. Moving on to the third item here, it's the May 18 Committee of the Whole Draft Agenda. And for this, I'll circle back to Manager Crumstock when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, before you is the draft. It is going to be a long night, but I'd like to explain a little bit more. Obviously, there will be a community development update. This is our continued explaining how the department has changed and some of the features that we continue working on. It is a nice update. Rolling Meadows Business Buzz Update, this should be short and sweet, just explaining again what we've done and how it continues to growing. From the Economic Development Committee, we have two items that they've been working on. They're now ready, and they're in, obviously, to the City Council. This is kind of time-sensitive, that's why it is coming back at this Committee of the Whole Meeting. One is a new restaurant incentive. That is actually based on an old one that pretty much expired. There are some new tweaks, there are some more discussions on that one, and hopefully that City Council, after the council meeting, if it is approved, then it would be put into an ordinance and then in place. The next one is completely new, which is a new sales tax generator incentive discussion that, again, economic development-based, very similar to the restaurant incentive, but also I wanted to make sure, again, what can you make yourself a little stand out for when other businesses are looking into potentially moving into Rolling Meadows, or what makes this a little easier to deal with and different things? Then we are going to have a discussion, Flood Brothers Recycling Contract Extension Request. We did get a letter at the end of April. It is coming up at the end of June, but we're also going to make that into larger discussion, but we are using the recycling discussion to also talk about some items in refuse overall. And then obviously, we have elected officials training. City Attorney Melissa Wolf will start doing some of the discussions that we need to do. It is important with some other items that have come up, but also making sure, and we do this every two years, but actually with some of the new updates that are out there. And again, typically, we've tried doing it in one night. If it doesn't work out, or it's getting really late, then we try putting it into two different nights, but that is very important for, obviously, when certain people have been looking at the Committee of the Whole, as we discussed, and we continue working on Committee of the Whole, started as three items, now it's six items. It's also pushed some other items to June, which has now pushed some items into July, but we're trying to be sensitive to time, but also with some of the other items. So other items that Aldermen have requested or commented or have made items to me, none of them have been forgotten. It's just looking at the time and making sure how we put things in there. But at this point in time, those are six items. Hopefully, it will be a reasonable night.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. So then moving from May 18 down to the following week of May 25, and the City Council's draft agenda.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, you have the draft, last meeting of May, meeting, so we will have the second reading of COVID ordinance. We will start the first reading of the next ordinance in place. Then from the Planning and Zoning Commission, there will be a ordinance up before you regarding 3,500 Bluebird Lane. That is actually owned by School District 214. They are using it to actually do a project, got it, put it together, and then they would actually sell the house when they're done. So they take all the students from 214, and they're specialty individuals who are in these classes, that they learn trades, they learn different pieces out there too. It did get unanimous recommendation from the Planning and Zoning. There were at least one resident who was at the meeting, and there are some discussions in the ordinance that you will see about parking and some of the other pieces on there. But it is allowing a school to use that. There are some additional reliefs that will be done. If I remember correctly, this is about the 22nd school project that they've used, Homes. Obviously, this is one of the first ones in Rolling Meadows. We'll pay some new bills that are in play, and then obviously, the purchase of the 2021 asphalt material for public works operations, and then award a contract for the utility locate service. and then award a contract for the utility locate services throughout the city. And then obviously, community items of interest that will be another point for Memorial Day and the first market plus the overall event for the Black Party. We'll talk about our financials as of April 2021, and we will also do our new businesses. And then finally, just the draft that is being worked on for the June 8th meeting. At that point in time, we also will probably have a closed session discussion regarding personnel with the new city council too. But that one I'm still working on. So that is the draft that is before you at this point in time.
Perfect. Looking forward to it, Manager Crumstock. Appreciate the updates and the forecast as to what's coming next. This now brings us to matters not on the agenda. And with that, is there showing of hands for any matters not on this agenda this evening? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just be real brief. It's our regular update from the May 3rd Economic Development Committee. As Manager Crumstock did note, the main focus of that meeting was to flush through some draft versions of the recommendations that are going to come to us at our Committee of the Whole Meeting next week for the rent-street incentive program, as well as what I'm just calling the Small Business Center Program to bring more residents or more businesses to Rolling Meadows, and specifically the Kirchhoff Corridor. The only other addition at that point, the small, the owners of small businesses that are part of the EDC, with myself and Alderwoman Veneziano, did comment and had some discussion around they're running into issues as they're trying to staff up for the next phase of mitigation, is that they're having a very hard time of getting staff. So anybody that may be listening or that we know are in look of a job or in need of a job, is keep an eye out for any posting availabilities in storefronts and things like that, because they did have some serious concern as mitigation efforts are relaxed, is that they're having a very hard time getting staff members to fill numerous slots at their small businesses. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for sharing that update. Alderman Veneziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually going to follow up on my, excluded it from my ward report by accident about the lighted stop sign on Central Road. I did receive feedback from several residents on Central Road. Very grateful for the stop sign that they have noticed that cars are stopping at the stop sign. So, so far, good, good reviews from residents on Central. Thank you.
Thank you. That's promising to hear. Manager Crumstock, I see your hands up for matters not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I do have one that I just want to reiterate to people. Obviously, staff just met with Sortomat. They're now known as ATS Life Science. They're on 5655 Meadowbrook Industrial Court. During that meeting, they did mention that they have more jobs that are available. We are trying to get those job ads up when they send it to us, to our website. So please be available. My best way of explaining to people when they ask what is Sortomat, ATS Life Science, they are the company that actually makes the machines that make the machines. So if you have an inhaler, they made the machine that makes the and machine that makes the inhaler. So very nice company. They've been here in the city of Rolling Meadows for about 10 years. They moved from Schaumburg, but the city council will hear some more about them too. They're looking at a potential expansion. They just bought another piece of property and they're trying to incorporate it. So we will also, when we do get those job ads and some of the other vacancies that they are actually working on, we will get that out to the city council too, not just on our web. They are actually starting an intern program too, which Assistant to the City Manager Lori Seizeck will be in touch with 214 to see it. They are really a nice company. They're very specialized, but again, they are at 5655 Meadowbrook, and I just want to put that as matter not on the agenda.
Thank you for sharing, Manager Crumstock. Are there any other matters not on the agenda this evening? Lower your hand real quick, Manager Crumstock. Throwing me off a bit. And if not, then I will let the audience and council know that there is a request to go into closed session. It does require a motion and a roll call vote. This is to discuss land sales under the five ILCS 120 slash 2C six of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Do I have by show of hand a motion? Thank you, Alderman Sanoka, and thank you, Alderman Veneziano for the second. Is there any discussion about entering into closed session? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session. And for everybody else, I wish you a wonderful evening. For council members and staff, we'll go ahead and disconnect here and log on to the other link that we have for closed session. Have a wonderful night, everybody.